Grimes?
Here.
Haug?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Bill?
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8, 2025 meeting? Planning and zoning commission, minutes? Okay, okay, yeah. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, so we had Commissioner Haug?
Yep.
And Haynes seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody who would like to speak during the audience time? If you are here for the agenda items, you will have the opportunity to speak at that time. Audience time is for anyone else who has anything to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please step up to the podium. Do I have any takers? Okay. Old business, do we have any old business? Okay, no old business, so we'll move on to the... Zoning calendar number 2785 is a variance for the allowed fence height and type of the front yard at 1212 Belvedere Road. Staff, please present this matter.
Hello, commissioners, my name is Rachel, planner with the planning and zoning department. I will be presenting today on zoning calendar 2785. I apologize for the technical difficulties, it'll be a little bit laggy today, but we'll march forward ever so. So, this is a variance at 1212 Belvedere Road. It has a variance from the fence height and fence type requirements. So, in the front yard of any property, there are certain requirements. This property is asking to have a variance from those. So, they are looking to do a 10-foot-tall chain-link fence in their front yard. This, again, is at 1212 Belvedere Road, kind of center of town, kind of leaning towards downtown. So, you can take a look here at our site map to see where this property is, kind of by the Waukegan Steel buildings, if you know where those are. So, this is a site map of the property and what they are planning to do or have already done. So, this fence you'll see highlighted in yellow, kind of goes along the property lines in the front yard and then going back into the side yard. There's also a faint green line that you can kind of see going down that center line that is also a 10-foot-tall chain-link fence that is going down that center of the property. So, there's some photos on the side showing the fence from February as well as December, so this has already been installed. I do want to kind of go through the timeline for this. So, back in early November, this fence started being built. It was tagged by code compliance for being built without a permit, so they received a stop-work order on the 6th. Their formal violation letter was mailed out on the 7th. They applied for a fence permit on the 6th after they got noticed for the stop-work order. On November 14th, they met with planning and zoning and building department. So, when they applied for their permit, we noticed that it was a 10-foot-tall chain-link fence, which is not permitted in that area, so we reached out to them to set up that pre-application meeting with them to go through that variance process. So, they met with us back in November. In December, their re-inspection kind of came along. They had not applied for the variance at that time, and the fence had not been taken down. So, they were then kind of sent forward on that adjudication court hearing process for the code compliance violation. In March, they returned back to planning and zoning, the building department, to have another pre-application meeting for this variance, and then in April, they applied. I do have a couple photos from November 6th of when they started installing the fence. These are photos from the code compliance officer that had seen it and tagged it. And then December 5th, this is when the fence, they had noticed it was completed, even despite that stop-work order, and then they had not applied for the variance at this point in time. So, I'll go back to our site photos just for a second. This property in the B3 zoning district in the front yard, so the first 15 feet of this property is considered the front yard, and that fence has to be no taller than four foot high, and it must be an ornamental fence. So, this could be like a wrought iron aluminum fence, it could be a picket fence, it could be a split rail, there's lots of options, but it needs to be an ornamental fence. Basically, it needs to be kind of opaque, and unfortunately, chain-link does not qualify as an ornamental fence. Chain-link is allowed in the back of the property. So, after that first 15 feet, then chain-link is allowed. I do want to walk through some of your options with this application. One needs a little bit more explanation than the others. So, you'll see on your motion sheets that there's a few options laid out ahead of you. You're welcome to take a look at any of those or make some variations based off of your decision here tonight. So, one of the options here that I do want to explain a little bit further is the approval of the height variance, but not the material variance. So, like I said, fences in the front yard have a height restriction, they also have a type restriction. So, this option would allow you to approve, excuse me, the height of the fence as a 10-foot-tall fence, but not the type of a chain-link fence. So, this would result in applicant being able to build up to that 10 feet tall, but not doing a chain-link fence. So, they would have to do an ornamental, so like I said, wrought iron, for example. So, I did provide a couple examples, one nearby in North Chicago is one, as well as one here in Waukegan, so you can see that these are pretty effective. They look nice, they hit that kind of ornamental aspect that that code requires and kind of pushes for, while still maintaining security. So, our applicants had requested in their application that they require this height variance and this type variance due to the nature of their business. So, Fansteel is our applicant, and they basically are using this property for storage. So, the building is going to have storage in it, and then kind of where that section of fence splits it in half on the eastern side is where some parking is going to be for the Waukegan Steel. They're kind of leasing that space to them. So, the reasoning for that height, the reasoning for the type is security purposes. This option here at the end does show that you can still have that security, that height, but still with the ornamental following the code. Some other options for you all here tonight is to approve the height and the material. So, it'd be a 10-foot-tall chain-link. The option that I just explained, approving the 10-foot-tall but an ornamental fence. Another option is approving the material, so they could do a chain-link, but it would have to follow the height requirements if they don't approve that, so it'd be a four-foot-tall chain-link, or you could deny both of them. Another option here for you today is to not approve the 10-foot in height, but to approve another height. So, maybe six foot in the front yard, maybe 20 feet in the front yard. Whatever you here decide today is fitting for this site, this location, as well as their needs for this variance. I've also included our findings of facts for the variance process and that decision-making. If there are not any questions, I'll hand it over to our applicants.
Any questions, commissioners? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? Or, excuse me. Would the applicant please come to the podium? Who's going to represent? Okay.
I will.
Could you raise your right hand?
So, I'm just applicant's attorney.
Okay. Do you swear to affirm to the testimony that you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and your affiliation with the property?
My name and...I didn't hear the second. Oh, my name is Tony Lockett, I'm the vice president of operations for Fansteel.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mike Noonan. I am with the law firm of Foley and Lardner. Our address is 321 North Clark Street, Suite 3000, Chicago. And as you know, I'm here representing the applicant, Fansteel, Inc. We've already met Tony. Staff did a really great job of summarizing our request, so I'm not going to really review that, or I don't really have anything to add to that. What I did want to go over, though, were some of our responses to the standards in the findings of fact. Now, I know that these are documented in our application, so if it feels redundant and you don't want me to go through those, that's fine. I'm happy to skip through them, but I would like to go through them for the record, if that's okay. All right. So, for standard number one, the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the subject property as applicant's business use of the property involves storage of proprietary and sensitive materials, and the four-foot-tall fence allowed by code does not provide adequate security for these proprietary materials. They're seeking interior fences as well to control site circulation on the property. For the second standard, if the strict requirements of the code were to be met, applicant would experience a hardship in that the subject property is located on a main thoroughfare of a busy, busy, commercial and industrial corridor. This is a frequently-traveled street, and applicant proposes constructing these fences so that they adequately secure the property and this business. For number three, the subject property is unique in that it's on a main thoroughfare in a busy, commercial, and industrial corridor, and its frontage on this main street differs from many similarly-zoned industrial properties in the city. As you know, as you probably know, most modern industrial properties have a far setback from the road. So, with those arrangements, a four-foot fence would provide adequate security since the building is set farther back, but this building comes very close to the property line. It's just an older building. So, we were...we would like to have the additional height for the fence to, again, promote privacy, security, and safety. The limitations of the property that caused this particular hardship, again, it's the location on the busy street. Proposed fences, or for fifth standard, excuse me, proposed fences are not going to impair adequate supply of light to adjacent properties. You know, the neighboring properties there are pretty much built out, almost, in many cases, almost to the property line or to the property line at a height exceeding the height of our proposed fence. So, there's really nothing, there's no air and light that is going to be blocked by those. They will not have any impact on congestion in the streets as they will be fully contained on private property. They're not going to block any sightlines either. The property is mid-block, there's no corners where, you know, you'll have to see around a fence. They're not going to endanger public safety, rather would support public safety by limiting access to private property and providing increased security. And they will not diminish or impair the value of nearby properties as the subject property is located in the commercial-industrial area. Fences are commonplace here. Standard number six, the proposed variance represents the minimum deviation from established standards in that fences are allowed under the code, and like I said, they're commonplace in the area. Applicant here is seeking a taller fence than allowed and a different type, you know, chain-link as opposed to ornamental. The fence will otherwise functions as code requires. The additional interior fence is for site circulation management as applicant is leasing that part of the lot to the neighboring property owner. And then finally, the proposed variance will maintain the character of the neighborhood as the surrounding area is comprised mainly of commercial and industrial properties where fences are commonplace, and it's not going to impact, you know, the area there. For these reasons, we feel that this variation meets all the necessary standards in the zoning code, and we would respectfully request your approval of the variation. I'm available for questions, as well as my client, as well, if you have any. Thank you very much.
Just a housekeeping matter, before you leave, there's a sign-up sheet there. Can both of you gentlemen sign that?
Yes. Yes, sir, of course.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
A question first for staff. The fence that is the dividing fence within the property line between this other entity that they're releasing out the parking space to, is that by code, I'm sorry, I know Noel had sent us the information, but I don't have it really handy, is that allowed to be chain-link fence?
It is allowed to be chain-link, it is not allowed to be 10 feet tall. So, it would be, it could go up to six feet tall on the interior, per code. Just reading the code as follows, it could be six-foot chain-link, kind of dividing.
Okay.
But anything that's at 15 feet or close, or from the property line 15 feet, has to be that front yard standard.
And so, everything that's currently there is 10-foot chain-link?
Correct.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant. I'm just curious regarding the timing of all the things that have happened here, what the reason was, what the legitimate reason was, or what your reason was for not stopping when the city came and said, "This is out of compliance, you must stop."
I think that was more, that was more just some miscommunication between us and the contractor that was doing the work. He came back and finished the work on a Saturday when nobody was here, so... He's since been reprimanded by us for doing such, but nevertheless, the job got done, and we were cited for it.
Okay. Was there a reason that there wasn't a permit applied by your, applied for by your contractor initially?
I submitted, I personally submitted the permit prior to starting the work. I guess I should have waited for approval to move forward. This fence was one of a few that we put in somewhere around the same time, so it's just a misunderstanding on my part. Currently, currently Fansteel has acquired quite a few properties in that corridor, being 1516, I think is one, 1421 is one, and now this property, so...
And do any of those other properties have a 10-foot fence?
No, ma'am.
So, all of the other properties are in compliance with the code?
Ray, do you agree now, sir?
There are a handful of properties in the area that either need permits or need variances for the fences that were installed. So, they've been working with us on a couple of the properties. There is one neighboring that does not have a permit, and is also a taller chain-link that would need a variance and a permit. But on 1516, they've been working with us, there's some environmental work that's going on on the site, so they have a temporary fence permit for that one now. And then another site, they're working with us to bring that into compliance and get a permit started and go from there.
I would also like to add that this fence, those other fences in Queensland, there was an agreement between us and the prior commissioner, Solis, I think his name was, and that was, it was approved that we can put those fences up just because we were doing, like she said, environmental work over there. And the same thing is hold true with 1212. That's some environmental work that has to happen as well.
I'm not sure I understand, you had some sort of a personal agreement between the, a previous commissioner not going before the commission itself?
It wasn't, it wasn't personal, we submitted all the necessary documents to put up. It was considered a temporary construction fence. This was all done during the time of COVID, because we supported COVID.
And do we have paperwork on that?
I have not been able to find any paperwork that documents that. So, 15, or 1516 Belvedere, the one that he's speaking about, is compliant now. So, that one has been figured out, and it has a temporary fence permit now in the system, and we do have that documented, but the previous agreement, that verbal agreement, we don't have any documentation of that.
What would be the reason that we wouldn't have any documentation?
I was not here during COVID, so I can't speak to that. But as we stand now, we don't go with verbal agreements in the city. We'd like to have things documented and go through our permit system and the variance process to get things approved.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I guess I'm with Rachel, I guess I don't have problems with the height of the fence, but I don't like the look of chain-link on Belvedere Road. I mean, that's one of the main thoroughfares into the city, and that's what we're showing. So, you know, so I guess I'm in favor of part of that variance, but certainly not the second.
Commissioners, anybody else?
I mean, I, we tend to agree, and I'm sorry that a business has to, if we are, if that's the way we end up voting, that there's an expense involved, but it feels as though it's not, it's something brought upon by yourselves, sort of thing. I don't know, does anyone have any other questions?
I have some questions, too. As far as the Belvedere exposure, are there some gates in there also for firefighters to get into the property?
Yes, sir, there's, the firefighter has, it's a double lock. So, I work, I work really close with Todd, so yeah, Todd's very familiar with our facility.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Were you fined the $750 with a red tag?
There was, I think it was submitted, but I think it was waived. I'm not 100% sure if we...
I know the condition on a red tag, usually, I think Waukegan's, what, 750 bucks?
Good evening, I'm the licensed zoning officer for the case. Their fines have been, they have been waived, there's a continuance, so I guess they're waiting to hear what's happened at the hearing tonight, and the hearing officer will determine a fine based on the hearing.
We have another hearing on this property next Wednesday, if I'm correct.
The height of 10 feet, is that, was that just an arbitrary measurement, or did you just want to...
That's, that's what the owner, Jim Breckenridge, he recommended that we do because of the dollar amount of equipment that we store in these facilities. You know, we, we, we're a pharmaceutical company, and we have millions of dollars per one piece of equipment stored, so...
The fence that's along, I think, is it still Waukegan Steel sales? Do they, still have it in any, the building that was there for their...
Yes, it was, the current building was Airgas, or Airgas building, but Waukegan Steel was leasing the parking area.
Okay.
Yeah, so the dividing fence in the middle, that separates the traffic from what we're putting inside of our facility.
Okay. Do you know if the fire department had any problems with adjacent properties with a 10-foot fence?
Not that we've heard from them at this time.
Well, to be clear, the fence between the properties can stay chain-link, is that correct? Aside from the variance for 10 feet, the material can be chain-link between properties? It's just the one facing Belvedere that doesn't comply in terms of material?
Pretty much. So, the fence that kind of splits it in half, the first 15 feet of it cannot be chain-link. So, another option is they can set the fence back to be in line with the building at about 15 feet.
So, in our options for approving, denying, et cetera, we, could we make one decision for the front fence and one decision for the inside fence? Or is there, is this considered all one thing because it's all 10 feet and all chain-link right now?
It's definitely your prerogative to split it into maybe the front one, to the middle one, to the side one, kind of however you see.
And the side one is not on Belvedere Road? And, I'm sorry, once again, I know you sent this to us, Nicole, and I apologize. What are, what is the requirement from the city for that side fence?
Yes, so, part of it would be, yeah, the first 15 feet considered the front yard. So, the first 15 feet of that, so the yellow line that's on your right-hand side, the east side of this lot, the first 15 feet of that is front yard and needs to be four-foot ornamental, and then the, all the rest of it is considered side yard and can be six foot, and it can be chain-link.
And that side yard, so there's a side yard, a middle fence, and a Belvedere Road fence. There's three sets of fences.
Pretty much.
And so, the, the code for the middle fence and for the side yard fence are the same. Six feet, or four feet up to six feet in the back half.
Yeah, up to six feet in height, and it can be a stockade fence, it can be a chain-link, it can be a lot more options than the front yard requirements.
Okay, and sir, on the side yard, that is the side yard of the, of the area that you are renting to someone else to park in, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
There's not equipment that has a high value in there?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's to keep, it's to keep them from...
Keep their, their stuff all together, the middle and the side, the east side. It's just the front part of your side of it that is the security issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What about the front part of their parking side? Is that also currently 10 feet chain-link?
Correct. All, all the fences that you saw in that site plan is 10-foot chain-link. There's some fencing way in the back, we're not worried about that. That was installed many years ago under a different owner, but the, that middle section, and then the eastern lot line, and the southern lot line, the front yard and the side, are all 10-foot chain-link right now.
Okay, so sir, the front-facing Belvedere Road fence that is for the parking area, is there a reason for that to be 10 feet for security purposes?
The front.
So, the whole front across is on Belvedere Road is chain-link 10 feet, but half of that section, or a portion of that section, is parking for the people next door to you, correct? Not your, you're not using it for storage. So, is there a reason that you would want that front section of the part that you're renting out to be 10 feet?
I think their intent was to just keep it all the same. I mean, that was, I mean, Jim hasn't given me any specifications on why he wanted it all 10-foot, other than security.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions? Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this matter?
Hello, everyone, I'm...
Please write, please raise your right hand.
I'm Lynn Florian, I live at 3067 North Augusta in Waukegan, and I grew up right across the street from Fansteel. So, I'm very familiar with this area, and when I come to City Hall, I...
Are you in first?
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah, right hand. Do you swear to affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And everything I said previously was true. So, when I come to City Hall, I come this direction, right past, I come down 120, cut through Glen Rock, it's a great shortcut to get here. I'm not a fan of chain-link fence, I'm just going to say. It deteriorates, it looks ugly, it's something we've been trying to get away from in the city. I know you mentioned you feel you need it for security, but isn't chain-link fence easy to scale and cut? And, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like it's the most secure fencing you can have. I mean, I realize making it 10 feet tall helps, but it, is it really the best option, security-wise?
From what I, from what I understand about fences, yes.
Okay. I just would like to see another option. I see chain-link fences from back in the day, they are rusty and old-looking, and this is a huge property, there's more, they're, it sounds like they're going to be back in front of you again with more fencing issues from the whole area. Do you intend to keep that empty, that area, that...
I'm sure there's a 10-year plan to build that up. He's expanding his facility.
Okay. Because it just looks kind of, you know, looks like a, almost like a junkyard waiting to happen or something. But anyway, I just wanted to throw my two cents in as a resident of the city, as someone who lived and grew up in that neighborhood. They're a great company, they've been around a long time. I'm 62 years old, I walk by there every day on my way to school, both West Grade School and East Campus High School. Smelled the lovely smell of whatever they were making that day. But I'd just like us to consider the fact that that's one of the main gateways into our city, 120, and I'd like to, to be as nice as possible, if we can, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. As, as was just spoken, it is a gateway entrance into Waukegan, one of the main three roads that would go into it from an east-west position, and it is something we're trying to beautify. And you can, you know that we are trying to beautify Waukegan. And we have our challenges, but we have to look at what the code calls for. Is there any, if there's any further, oh, were there any write-ins at all?
We did not receive any comments back from the public.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion for zoning calendar 2785.
I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and approve the variance of fence site in all locations and deny the variance for the fence type along Belvedere Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have Commissioner Haug that made that, and Commissioner Grimes seconded. Do we have that, Kathy, the whole motion? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, discussion.
Commissioner Haug, is there a reason in your mind to not have the east side fence also in compliance with height? I know that chain-link is allowed there, would there be a reason not to ask that to be in compliance? And here's my only, here's my only thought about this process. We have a code process, and there is an avenue for a company or a person to come to this commission, and we seem, I think, to be fairly open to alternatives as we've had other people come to us for variances on fences for different things. And I feel that by not being as close to code as possible, we're setting the stage for people to, we have a code, people that drive around and find code compliance, people that are out of compliance. I have that in my neighborhood. And if we don't adhere to the code and put people, have people rectify things, we're just setting the stage for it to continue to happen. And so, that's my only thing, is that I agree with what you said about the front, the height, and just changing the material, but I don't feel that there's a real reason to say it's okay that they dis, that they, just because there was a miscommunication that their contractor went ahead and did the... the 10-foot fence in the internal and on the side, that we should say that that's okay.
I guess the only reason I think of that is just because of the context of where it's located. You know, I think you have a good reason for security reasons for doing what you're doing, and it is pretty much an industrial area, except for the area that's obviously facing Belvedere Road. So, you know, like Alderman Thora said, you guys have been a great, you know, company within our town. We appreciate that you're, you stayed in Waukegan, unlike a lot of other companies that have left. So, you know, I guess I'm willing to say, you know, give him that variance just because of the situation and location, and, you know, you're a good company and standing in Waukegan. So I'm willing to make an exception.
Do you feel we're setting a precedence in any way?
Ah, you know, I think every one that comes before here is a different situation, you know. I think a couple, last month, we had a couple of fence come before us, and, and we approved them, and, you know, just because they look nice, right? One of them had a gate on it, and the guy did a beautiful wrought iron thing on it, and we were like, man, can you come and do that at my house? So, you know, I, I'm willing to look at it a case-by-case basis, I guess.
I have a question for the ownership. Does, do you know what the length of the, the Belvedere exposure is? How long, how long is it across Belvedere? 100 feet, 200 feet, what is it?
Best guess would probably be, probably about 200, 200 feet.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. As you know, the motion, that's what we got, and basically, the decision of this court does not have to go to City Hall for a final. We are the approving authority of this. So when can we expect a building permit?
I'm working on it with Rachel. I, I, yeah, I'm just, yeah, we submitted it, so everything is, yeah.
We have a permit in the system right now, so we'll work with them to get it updated. Right now, it's on hold because of this variance process, but we'll get it kind of kick-started again and get them going with a new site plan.
And it's not my jurisdiction, but I would say that as far as the enforcement goes, maybe if you're going to proceed with this the way we indicated, that we might consider alleviating the fine. Just a suggestion. I have no authority other than my personal opinion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify with the motion that was passed, I know the, the height was deemed okay, the type of chain link fencing is permitted on the sides, but not the front. Am I correct? And for that 15-foot front yard on the east side, that can be chain link, or that is ornamental? Chain link, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that written down in my notes. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for being a vital part of Waukegan.
Thanks, everybody. I saw the one with the iron that the resident made, that was really cool.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Are adjourned at 7:34.